Welcome to this regular meeting of the Biloxi City Council on July 16th, 2024. Being that there is a change to the agenda, do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Unanimous vote. Ms. Carey, will you read those changes?
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5A Exhibit B only for resolution accepting rate quote from Cadence Bank in connection with the purchase of 19 vehicles.
Do I have a motion to accept that amendment? All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Unanimous vote. This brings us to the presentation agenda mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Welcome to everyone to our second meeting in July. We've had a nice, warm July so far. It'll get warmer, a little bit warmer as we go on. But welcome, everyone. And that concludes my report.
That's it? All right. Do we have a departmental report today? If not, we move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
We're heading into meetings since the 4th of July. And fireworks went up well, which supported the city in the Boom Boom Committee. Once again, it was a great firework shoot for the city of Biloxi. It was the second largest in the southeastern area in United States. When they shoot them big ones up there, they think the 1,200 pop. The ones that go so high, that's the biggest difference. But it turned out to be a great shoot. Second thing, I know we moved some money to help the Seafood Museum with Camille Memorial. And they had it on TV. I think that's gonna be ready for August the 17th. It'll be 50th anniversary of Camille. So that'll be ready. And actually, they laid it down. They won't have a problem with the titles waived and stuff like that coming in. They kind of flattened it out till they built on the wall. And it won't have any water either, so it'll be a lot easier to maintain. But it looks good down there. So that's a good thing. And one thing, I called Jerry about 444 Oak Lawn. We had a fire with 440 and Lund property. And they said she's got a court date in August. Well, the property's already overgrown. I thought we had the right to go in and cut that property at 444 Crawford.
I'll shake on that, Mr. Lawrence.
All right. But I don't know what the court date was. I don't know if y'all already maybe cited it or something else. But I mean, we need to have that yard cleaned up, not five weeks from now. So that's why I just wanted to bring that up, let you know. But I did check, you see, you've already done something. So I guess you got to find out where we at with that now. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
Councilman Lawrence?
Yeah.
I just briefed the mayor a few minutes ago about the air conditioning repairs at the Seafood Museum. They're belly up right now. And we are assisting Rousard Services to make the repairs necessary.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that, but I figured you're gonna get that fixed. I mean, you can't have a city building without air conditioning, especially a museum. So I don't know what happened, but I heard about that, but I figured y'all was working on that. You're not? You're not gonna do anything?
Yeah, they are. Actually, they engaged Rousard Services.
Say it again, Phil. I can't hear you, Phil.
Jody, Bruce, Rousard Services is moving on that right now. I think it's an electrical board problem.
Yeah, maybe.
And they're putting up some temporary AC to be.
It might have been anything major. I hope not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that.
Mr. Guines?
All right. I want to thank Public Works for fixing that, finally fixing that fire hydrant for me. It's been a long time coming. And I wanted to announce on the 30th of this month, we have a ward meeting at the Frank Gruich Community Center at 5:30. And last but not least, congratulations, Ms. Dixie.
Thank you. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, just a reminder, this is, the next meeting will be the last meeting in July. Chief, if you'd get us a list of special events approved for August, thank you. Fitness equipment at Pennzoil Park, my favorite topic. Where are we on that? I don't see her. You're on your own, Mayor.
Jamie's here.
That's all right.
Equipment at Pennzoil.
Fitness equipment at Pennzoil Park. Thank you. Why, Jamie, this isn't you. We heard that, I want to say, three weeks ago or a month ago. So anyway, I'm just gonna keep checking. There's no reason for this, but I'll keep asking about it. Also, the IP parking lot south of Bayview, I know that there was, you're looking at landscaping and everything.
Yeah, there was a plan, I think Vincent Schwartz is.
Waiting on the final draw.
Right, right.
Okay, and that drawing would be coming from the IP, Jerry? Okay, thank you. That's it? Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Thank you. I just got a few updates. First, I'm proud to announce that Lamy Street is, the paving is being completed as we sit here today. It looks beautiful, a lot more safer. That uneven roadway, it was a project jointly by the city of Biloxi taking the lead along with the city of DeIverville and Harrison County supervisors doing that project together. And it looks really good. Also, as we speak, the trucks are out at the tennis courts and they're installing new lights out at the tennis courts. Talked to a couple of the guys that was installing it. They were running into a couple of issues, but they were on top of it and troubleshooting it and trying to get those lights up and installed. So a lot of people are looking forward to that. I do have a question on the, because I'm getting a lot of phone calls on league, Little League football, and what the plan is going forward. And if there is a plan, if we can communicate that clearly, if there isn't, if it isn't mapped out yet, and we still need a little bit more time, that's fine too. But I'm getting some calls and people are getting mixed signals of what's happening with Little League football. Yes, sir.
We had a meeting at the, we were watching them roll out the turf. And again, like we did with girls with the softball and now Little League, you know, we're step by step, as it rolls, I think they're turfing about quarter of it today, aren't they? They're rolling out the turf, I'm talking about landscapers. But again, what's gonna drive this, and Jamie can follow up with what I'm gonna say, is that we're not gonna, you know, do anything before it's time. And that's what's gonna drive the issue. There was some equipment problem for grading, I think it held up about a week or so. Jamie, is that right? And then, again, you know, the ground conditions and irrigation, making sure all that's right. So we don't have a solid answer, but we do have a plan on using some of the international as well as the Pops Ferry for the football events that we may have an issue with.
Okay.
So that's the plan. There'll be a plan, but not necessarily at that point.
Just to give you an update, that we went and walked the Pops Ferry fields day before yesterday, or yesterday, actually, yeah, Monday. And have just kind of started mapping out a plan of what we're gonna do as far as getting those fields up and ready to, in case football has to be played out there. You know, it's, due to daylight savings time still being in effect, we feel that we can offer a good product out there on those fields. And kind of talking with the mayor and everything, you know, our goal would be, once the time changes and then the soccer starts, that would hopefully be when those fields would be ready and able to be played on. But we're definitely gonna have football, and Little League football this year.
Okay. Hey, listen, old football coaches, Pee-wee coaches, they're very adaptable. Just give them somewhere where they can throw a football and have some tackling dummies and they'll do their thing with the kids. But just as long as there's a plan for, you know, the kids and the coaches to look forward to, the uncertainty get kind of, and we understand why the uncertainty is here. We've got better things happening in the future and, you know, it's just part of it. But we need to try to make that as seamless as possible. And then I'm gonna transition to one more question. Fall baseball is always, I guess recently, come to the forefront, and we may not be ready for that either. So some people are saying it's canceled altogether. Wouldn't there be an opportunity to play on the Megas fields or those fields, if necessary, for fall ball?
And you know, that's something that we're also investigating, you know, but then again, we're also gonna need places for people to practice football as well, when that comes up.
Sure.
It's definitely, you know, something that we have discussed and talked about, and we're just trying to map it out. You know, the worst thing we don't want to do is overload or overwhelm anything. We want to make sure, you know, with the football, we can get that stabilized at a location. And if that's the case, then there may be some areas of overflow that we can have for.
We even talked about the big field in the softball complex.
Right, the big baseball field at the softball, you know, that's still grass back there. You know, we may have to play some football on that. It's just, we're looking at different options right now, Councilman, and, you know, we want to make sure that we put, we're still able to put the best product we can out as well.
Not gonna hurt that turf. I mean, that's the main goal. We're putting a much, that's the thing that's gonna drive whether we play or where we play.
And you know, I know it's been an ongoing, but, you know, as the mayor said, you know, we want to make sure that we let this process heal. And that way, when we do open it up, when we're ready for business, we can offer the best product out at that complex that we can.
There ain't no doubt, just seeing if we had a little bit of vision for an alternative in the process.
We are. We are in the planning stages of that. Yes, sir.
Appreciate all you do.
Yes, sir.
Really do. Thank you. And then I just got one, and I may have missed it in here, but if I can ask Christie, our engineer director, about Fern. I know we've talked about a drainage issue and putting a pipe in, and I've been trying to get up to speed with all these ordinances and what's happening and all the updates. Can you just provide any?
Yeah, it's still on our repair place list. It's a couple of projects down. We've got a couple of things already lined up. So it's on there. It's slowly making its way to the top. It's not all the way at the bottom, because we know it's a really big drainage problem back there. But we're trying to get to it as soon as we can.
All right, that's all I needed to know. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Just a few things. Mayor, on the roundabout, any of the roundabouts in the city? Just curious. I know it's MDOT, but do the cities, or do we have any say in the design or anything they do when they're?
In Woolmarket, that roundabout, no, we don't.
So that was strictly MDOT in the design and everything they wanted to do, they did?
And cost, too.
Yeah, right, right. Let me see. Woolmarket out at the boat launch, at Woolmarket. Do we maintain that? Do you know the grass cutting, trash pickup? I mean, there's several garbage cans out there. Or do you know if that's Harrison County?
I don't have the answer to that. I'll find out.
I just, and it's usually not a big deal, and I know it's a holiday, it was a four-day holiday, but it was trash, and I'm sure nobody was working. However, it was bad. It was everywhere, and it made whoever's job 100 times worse trying to pick all that up. And I'd heard it was the county, but nobody's been able to confirm that or not. Wake zones, water out, do we regulate where we can put wake zone signs?
I think we do. With DMR, we have to approve what we propose, yeah.
So if we have an issue somewhere, we can bring it up to the DMR? And then it would be?
Pops Ferry, right at the bridge.
Even out here at the small craft?
Yeah, I think there is.
Well, there's a sign, but I'll be honest with you, it's terrible out there. And there's one sign, that's what I was thinking, there's one sign on the east side, but on the west side of the wall. So, but if it was, we can bring that up to the DMR. And then, do we do that after that, or does the DMR do that?
DMR does it, I think. They post the floats, right? You pass that, you're accepted, called, matched.
Okay, okay, okay. And lastly, I know I've beat the ditches, drainage, culverts, and grass to death. I'm happy to say that Public Works has been out cutting grass in Ward 7. Finally, I know they've shorthanded still and battling the rain and everything else. However, drainage is a huge issue. Flooding's a huge issue out of these ditches. They're cutting them now, they're getting the right of ways in the ditches, but they're not weed eating. So honestly, they're blowing a lot of the clippings back in the ditch, and they're not weed eating the ditches. So it's really not helping drainage of the ditches. And it's causing a bigger problem, I think, on the flooding. In the last probably two or three weeks, I've had, oh gosh, probably a dozen or more just issues with drainage and ditches. So that's something just we may need to look at, just trying to get them out there weed eating some of them.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to public agenda. Citizen comments, where we have a total time allotted of 45 minutes. Each person gets three minutes each to speak. Once you reach the desk, please sign your name and address as well as stated out loud for the record. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? No one? All right. Anyone on my right, your left, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone in the room? All right. If not, citizen comments are now closed.
Anybody down the hall, anyway.
We'll move on to the policy agenda. Ms. Carey?
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance, removing the ability to apply for conditional use within a downtown zoning for certain cannabis uses.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Guines. Being a first reading, we will move on to ordinance B.
Ordinance to amend section 10521, the Point Getup Marina and Biloxi Small Craft Harbor birthing rate schedule.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Glavine, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Being also a first reading, we will move on to ordinance C.
Ordinance to amend section 10522, the Sherman V Kane and Bat Bay Fishing Dock and the Biloxi Commercial Fishing Dock Birthing Rate Schedule.
I'll move that as well.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Glavine and seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Being also a first reading, we will move on to ordinance D.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning from RS5 High Density Single Family Residential to RM20 Medium Density Multi-Family Residential for 12105 Cedar Lake Road.
Previously moved by Mr. Guines and seconded by Mr. Shoemaker. Any discussion, Mr. Guines?
Have none. I defer that to Mr. Shoemaker, Ward 7.
Mr. Shoemaker?
I feel that, I've discussed it with the owner at length, and I make my decisions, you know, individually, not one, I mean, I don't make, I don't have a blanket policy. However, this one, understand it's in Ward 7, understand where it's located in RS5. However, I think the location, it's across the river, literally 50 or 60 feet from a bar restaurant that has live music sometimes, an RV park, and literally just south of that, we've already approved a short-term rental within, I don't know, 100 yards, if that. Anything north of this is gonna be, there's two residents, and they're a couple hundred yards, literally, north of this residence. And on the north, on the east side of the north, is gonna be a church and a mini warehouse. So that being said, I think of anywhere in Ward 7, this is an ideal spot to approve it and have this done.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I never get when we started short-term rentals. This is something we said we'd never do to council, to take a piece of residential property and turn it into RM20. We were trying to get rid of RM20s and RM30s because of the conditional use. And we said we'd never do something like this. And here it is on the table. And yes, it might not be a bad location, but you're taking a residential neighborhood, changing it to RM20, so you can have a short-term rental with a conditional use. That's something, I can't support that. I'm staying by what we said when we first started this stuff in 1819, that we would never do this, and this is not the right thing to do in anybody's area, to take any residential address and move it into a conditional use. That is not what conditional use is for, and this is not what the short-term rental was set up for, ever. So that's, to me, is everything we said we wouldn't do, they're trying to be done right here today.
So can't support that at all.
Anyone else?
Yes, and just reading through the narrative, actually, the transcript from the planning commission, there were several things that were mentioned. One was the cost of the bulkhead and the dock, mortgages, insurance, taxes, cost of building materials, and having lead the property when it floods. And it's in a spot where the river, when you get a heavy rain, it's going to flood. And it just appeared to me that the owner could have better planned ahead on what those costs would be and so forth. And it looks almost to me as if we're bailing the owner out. I don't know the owner. I'm sure he's a nice guy. But it's, it just looks like we're changing the zoning to help bail out the owner so that he can cover the cost of these materials, these financial headwinds that he ran into. That's an observation. The second thing is, it bothers me as it bothers Mr. Lawrence in Ward 1, that we're looking at residential property. I remember we did this, the council did this, I voted against it, I suspect Mr. Lawrence did as well, probably four or five years ago, in the middle of some residential property. We changed the zoning to an RM2030 and then approved the conditional use. And so here in the middle of this residential area, you had now a commercial, piece of property being used for commercial purposes. So when Mr. Lawrence says we said we'd never do that, some of us on the council didn't agree with what the council did, but that's why there are seven of us on the council. We're not all perfect in all this. But I can't support this, as my friend, Mr. Lawrence, can't support it. Thank you.
I'm gonna support the Councilman for Ward 7, and I'll tell you why. I've been over this road, Cedar Lake Bridge, thousands of times. This is a river, kind of a riverfront area, recreational for boating, for fishing, not heavy residential at all. When you look at Camp David, Yomama's House, I know it's changed to a different name, different restaurant, but that is for commercial and tourism, kind of related pleasure. And this doesn't encroach on anyone. We haven't heard an outcry from residents. We had a public comments that just got closed for an opportunity for anybody to voice why we should reconsider conditional use, which is something we do have to consider, changing, you know, the zoning of a particular area. And this seems like it's probably the highest and best use for this particular property on the other side of the bridge for this type of development, and I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Just if I may, and like Councilman Glavine said, there's no opposition. I've had no one contact me, to my knowledge. If they've contacted the owner, he hasn't told me, but I think it was the opposite. I think that the neighbors to the north were supportive of it. Now, I don't have anything in writing, but I think they were, the owner, I think, has something in writing. However, we've had no opposition previously, none today. And I would like to ask Mr. Creel, and I understand, I know we do these conditional uses and different things, but we do, we've done these in the past, and we have just south, again, it's, and I understand it's residential, it is zone residential. However, there's very, very, very few residential houses, all mainly commercial, south and north.
This property, the comprehensive plan, in our comprehensive plan, it talks about utilizing the river more for recreational uses. This house is right on the river, again, right across from Camp David, which is a major commercial operation, cat a corner across from Yomama's House, which, you know, plays loud music and everything. And then we've already approved one on the south side there on Road 536 for short-term rental. The applicant did get letters from the neighbors that are north of him, none of which can even see this property from their house, because the woods are so heavy between there. They have no objection to it going in. It's what I consider a great location for a short-term rental. You know, it'll certainly attract people, you know, being right there by the river. But, you know, if we had had people at the meeting that objected to it, you know, that would be one thing, but just the opposite, they're in support of it, so.
Right, thank you.
Listen, Jerry, this is a residential neighborhood. Don't worry about what's across the river. This sits inside a residential neighborhood. And the state law says you have to have a need. Well, there's no need for one short-term rental. There's no need at all. State said it gotta be a mistake in the zoning. It's always been residential.
Or a change in the character of the zoning. But, Mr. Lawrence, and I guess the change in the character of the neighborhood would have come when the council approved the one on Road 536, that that opened the door for short-term rental to go into this area.
That's the problem. The rest of the people, Woolmarket, I figure you go out there, now we're gonna start doing a herd neighborhood. So then we're gonna go against all of them, just start taking neighborhoods apart. They want to be protected, I'm telling you. I know where it's at, I know where it's the whole thing, but there's no need. And you have to, the state law states that clearly. I know that don't seem to mean anything.
Anyone else?
Okay, if you look at the map, if you look at the map, this is a piece of property that we're talking about. It is right on the point. Everything around this is wooded. None of these other houses that are spread out very far apart can even see this piece of property, the house that's up there. Here's Camp David, here this large part, here's Yomama's House over here, and here's Road 536 where y'all have already approved a short-term rental.
But I asked you a question, answered a question, that y'all is all residential neighborhood. You changed the residential neighborhood. You can call what you want, down the street, across the thing, houses backwards, all that stuff you say, that's a residential neighborhood, you changing.
Well, which is a commercial business. To commercial all the time.
Right.
But all he's asking for is to change.
But you gotta have a reason to do it. You have to have a reason. There's no reason.
Argument is changing the character of the neighborhood.
Ain't no character to change, it's still residential. Still a change.
You've got, you've got a.
Nothing, nothing has changed. I mean, you know, you make that stuff up, because somebody changed something across the river. It's not across the river. This is part of a residential neighborhood.
I'll finish with this, Mr. Creel, thank you. I'll just say two things. I don't know what the definition, quite honestly, of what a neighborhood is. Maybe I should have looked it up. However, I did not. There's a couple of houses, a couple hundred yards south, and two houses, maybe three houses, north. It is zone RS5, I get that, which is residential. However, there's no residential houses there, but the ones I've mentioned multiple times, they have no opposition. We just saw, there's no opposition here. Nobody's contacted me. And the couple of neighbors that they do have, the owner has letters from, and they're fine with it. One last question for me, though, Zach. Are we doing, the council, if we approve this, are we doing anything illegal if we approve this?
No, we're not.
That's fine, thank you. That's all I have.
I'd like to ask you a question. What does the state, the state law states two big things? If we're breaking the state law, that's not illegal? I mean, somebody needs, I've asked this question before. The state law says you have to have a need. They have to prove a need for it. Ain't nobody proved any need, and they had a mistake in the zoning. There's no mistake in the zoning. It's been residential neighborhood. That's the first two big state laws you have to bypass to change anything. And neither one of them, we don't qualify for either one of them. And you said we're not breaking any laws, so the laws of the state don't mean anything? Somebody gotta let me know. Otherwise, I'll just quit wasting my time, if they don't mean nothing.
It's our ordinance, I think we pay attention to our ordinance. And y'all.
Here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast, our biggest thing is tourism, and we sell water. We sell beaches, rivers, and all the above, and recreation. So I'll be supporting the Ward 7 councilmen, because that's what we sell, and that's what we want.
Can I ask you a question, Felix? We're not part of the state, because we're on the Gulf Coast by water.
Tourism is.
I just, just trying to see, I thought maybe we in Louisiana or Alabama, I don't know. We supposed to be protecting the laws of the state of Mississippi. We're all taking note to do that.
Tourism is our industry.
That ain't nothing to do with changing zones. It's nothing to do with tourism.
Okay. Call for the question. All in favor? One, two, three, four. All against? Move on to resolution E, ordinance E, sorry.
Ordinance to amend the zoning district map for the establishment of a planned district
and fill district master plan coupled with the preliminary subdivision for 1654 Beach Boulevard.
Previously moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Ms. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, this is another one I can't support. Same thing. We taken a CB, which this has always been CB property, hotels, motels, and condominiums. This is the fourth plan, this is the fourth change on the table. The only one we actually passed was the first one, and they come back, said they wanted to separate the townhouses, so we voted in to separate the townhouses. And the townhouses are 1,200 to 1,800 square feet. Three, never made it to the table, and four, the totally different propositions, building 850 square foot lots, not houses, lots. So now I can't support this either because this is not what we need in the city of Biloxi, a tourist town, as Felix said. You need something better than this. This is not what we need. And originally, all they said they wanted to do was rent them. Okay, if they rent them, they can't sell them. So now they're trying to change it so they can sell them. There's another change. But none of that's been approved by the council. The council stayed with the original, the one that was passed, the number two version is the only thing that's actually officially on the table. This one here, can't support that, same thing, they just don't need it, and you definitely don't need to change the CB zone, it's hotels, the motels, and condominiums around there. That's all it is. So we definitely don't need to change it from a CB to anything. And the infield, whatever they call it, infield thing, actually went to the old Biloxi area, little bit to ours, is the reason that thing was put in place. And this is not part of Biloxi. We didn't take Abbeville west until 1964, so there's nothing to do with the part of old Biloxi. So I really don't think the PDI actually fits this, this project. So I can't agree with that either. But no, I can't support that. And yeah, we had a lot of people was against it, they was all for the townhouses, and they had no problem with the townhouses, but we had stopped, we changed that right off the bat. That was the first thing we passed, we rescinded that, and then we come back, I think Jerry brought it to us, to separate the townhouses. And that's what we actually approved, just what we, that. Three never made it, and this is the first thing we had since then, and this is a total different setup from what we started with. So I can't support that either.
Mr. Guines?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Creel, give me, give me a little bit about the planning commission, how they voted, and the outlook.
The planning commission approved it 12-0. What happened initially, Carrie, if you'd put the map up there. Initially, this did come forward as a townhouse development, they were going to have the townhouses lined up on either side of the property, just like they've got the houses being built right now. And they were going to sell them, okay? So we went through the plat procedure and everything else and got approval. And then Mr. Elliott came back and said that something, he had decided instead of doing townhouses, to build individual houses there, and because it's something had changed in the banking industry, what they were going to do is just rent them instead. Excuse me. So we go back and start over again with the rental property, which is allowed in CB zoning, that's our tourism zoning, entertainment zoning. And so after a period of time of working on that, they came back and said, we're getting a lot of requests to buy these individual units, so we want to go back and do individual units with a subdivision with individual lot lines so that we can actually sell them, which is allowed as a PDI. Now, the PDI said that the, the PDI is the area that takes in much of the peninsula, and, you know, the peninsula runs a long way, not just the east end of town. So they came back, they've gone through the process, they've designed this preliminary plat to show individual lots that they can sell. All the houses that are on there, there are 38 of them, are all two-story, they'll be between 1,100 and 1,200 square feet each. They're separated, they went through DRC, you know, fire department sits in on DRC, so they reviewed that. And on commercial projects, whenever we receive actual building plans, the fire department reviews those plans as well as we do, we review them. They have no, the houses themselves have no penetrations on the sides, and they're hardy plank from top to bottom, which is concrete board, you know, to make sure that they have the fire protection that they need. But this is.
What's the elevation in that area?
The elevation, it's not affected by the flood zone, the only lot in there that's affected by the flood zone is the southeastern lot, and the house is not in that, it's just a corner of that lot down there that's affected. It will not be, the house will not be in the flood zone at all.
Right, but they will be elevated.
They don't have to be. Yeah, they're, they're at the elevation right now that you're going to see, they started at the back and they're working their way toward the front. The, I mean, this is, look at where this is, this is walking distance to the white pillars, it's walking distance to shark heads, it's right in our tourism district to get through there. And, you know, you've already approved it for townhomes, which were going to be sold, so why not approve it for individual houses that are going to be sold? If for whatever reason, I mean, the short-term rental, if that's the concern, can be done in either, either way.
Right.
You know, even if it remains a rental property, they could still do short-term rental there, but they want to sell the housing, because I'm sure there's some people that'll buy them to actually live in it.
Actually, a question, Jerry. The one that we passed, the two, it was strictly for the long-term rentals, there was nothing about selling anything. That's what, that's what the one we actually passed, the second one, it was for long-term rentals, and they stated they would not sell them.
They were, they were going to rent them, that's correct. They went back to.
That's precisely on the table.
Yeah, so.
That's the only thing they supposed to be following right now. Nothing else is.
Well, that's why they're here, Mr. Lawrence, is to ask you to allow them to do a PDI.
Yeah, but they already built them, they already built what you said.
And that's okay.
With the right to have to build them.
Yeah, no, they can, they can do that. They, they came in and asked, can we go ahead and start building these? And I said, well, with the understanding, you know, the location is not going to change on the individual houses, but with the understanding that if for whatever reason this does not get passed, you know, it'll still be rental property. So they said, well, let's, let's go ahead and ask for the PDI on it. So that's where we are.
But a couple of things, like the parking, they're not allowed parking for each one of those 850 feet, the 30 feet is all common ground, 100% of property is common ground. The person that buys is just buying that 850 square feet. He has no parking, and he has no backyard, everything's two and a half feet.
That's true.
That's to me what's wrong with the whole thing.
Well, that's true, but in the subdivision covenants, it's going to allow them to have.
It's a subdivision, you can have a subdivision. It has been approved a subdivision.
It is a subdivision if this PDI is approved. That's what's before you today, dividing it into individual lots.
That's my father's old thing, we let, they, no, they already doing something they shouldn't be doing. So what is it, if, and I'm not for this.
Yeah.
I hope, I hope they vote this section down, this number four, you know, but anyway. And the velocity, is that a velocity zone?
No, it's not in the velocity zone.
Right there, not a velocity zone.
No, sir, if you look at your map that was in your packet, it shows that the very southeast corner of a lot, I mean, not the whole lot, but just a corner of it, is in the flood zone, and the rest of it is, is not.
I guess they should have told them, the people that had them houses there, Jerry, Camille and Katrina.
And basically, this allows them an opportunity to sell it if they.
That's correct, that's all they do.
Okay.
Sell us the townhomes, yes.
Well, that concludes my questioning. Thank you, George.
Mr. Tisdale?
So as, as currently approved, the site can't be subdivided, right?
Under, under what?
Your properties can't be sold.
That's correct.
Came to us, originally it was going to be townhomes.
Yes, sir.
They got away from townhomes, but we're still going to do long-term rentals. Okay. The PDI allows them to, to, so where do I want, allows them to, well, not only market that, but, but I'm looking for the right, I don't know. I'm having a senior moment here.
Well, with a PD, with a PD.
Yeah.
The reason that this is done, it's an overlay district, with a PD, when you're limited on space, it allows you to design the project to the market standards. So if smaller lots, less maintenance, and more house is a part of what they believe is the market at that time, then that's the way that they design it. And the planning commission and the city council either voted up or voted down based on the merit of the whole project. So that's the reason that they put this together.
The word I was looking for was skirted, it allows the, the typical or normal or regular variances to be skirted, to be modified to some extent.
Well, it creates flexibility, skirted is probably, that's a word for here, but that's.
I prefer it to flexibility, but that's semantics.
That's what a PD is.
That was a better word, Dan.
Right.
That word is actually in the ordinance. It allows, when you're doing a PD, it allows the flexibility.
I got it.
Developer not to be held to the very stringent standards of the overall code as far as lot size and those kind of things.
Put your arms out like that, Jerry, just humor me just for a moment.
Okay.
All right. Those houses are not quite that far apart.
That's correct.
Okay. I checked with the chief, the chief said they can deal with that for fires and everything. On the other hand, I'm going to go back to what I, a topic I'd mentioned earlier. We have a developer who's come in, made a presentation, gone through the, the process, come to us, gotten what he wanted, originally, turns out, and now the market's changed. I'm going to hustle and come back, and how do we do this? And part of your job is to say, well, you have options.
Mm-hmm.
Here's what those options are. So they're taking advantage of an option as the market's changed, which bothers me because here we are, I'm big on planning and all that stuff, yet we have developers coming in at the last minute, now because the market's changed, this is what I want to do so I can generate more profit. That's the only reason. I'll remind some of the members of this council that may have forgotten that we had an apartment complex in West Biloxi in Briarfield, I think it was 36 units, and the owner, developer at the last minute, came in and said, I'd like to, I'd like for all of these to be short-term rentals. And the council approved that, again, in the middle of a residential area, and now we went to RM 20 and 30, which is what it was approved for with the conditional use. We now have 36, possibility of 36 short-term rentals, and for those out there that haven't followed this, but I've said it before, there are now more short-term rental eligible properties in that neighborhood than there are single-family residence properties in that neighborhood, that's the only point I wanted to make. Having said that, I'm done, I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. So I'm looking at this where it's highlighted and bold, it's currently CB, is that what it's currently?
Yes.
And I'm looking to the left of the property, I see several, they're either CB or NB to the left. Immediately to the right is CB, and then up toward, I guess, the north part of this plat, there is a block that's RM 30 and a lot of these little homes that are RS 7.5. So I hear what Dr. Tisdale is saying, you know, we have a developer that came in, things changed in the market, he comes to, back to the city council, and he says, is there something as I market this property and develop this property and make it useful, what can I do? And that's your job. You know, there's a lot of things you do that I don't agree with, there's a lot of things you do that are great for the city. And so that's your job to work with this developer to find a, a solution to what he's trying to do. He's trying to develop the land, make it marketable, make it useful, make it productive, create tax base, you know, for, for the city along Beach Boulevard here. And so I, again, I didn't hear an outcry today of people that are saying we shouldn't put this in this area. I'm leaning towards supporting this project. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't see any residential.
No, no, a lot of people did complain, but they made a townhouse, but they all loved. They don't have a clue that this has changed like that.
Okay.
None. This is the fourth change on this one piece of property. If you remember when they first, they all was in favor, they came here and said they was all in favor of the townhouse. Well, it's not a townhouse anymore. It actually really is, this thing on the table is what they don't want.
Do we have pictures of the difference of what this is going to be looking like?
I don't have the pictures of the individual units, but the thing is with the townhomes, the townhomes should have been sold and used for short-term rental, and what they're proposing there now can be sold and used for short-term rental. So there's really no difference between what y'all approved in the beginning and what you're approving now. Some people may choose to use these for short-term rental or not. We've not heard anything from anybody.
Jerry, that's not true, the first one with the townhouses, and like you said, it's true. We rescinded that, they voted them number two, and they had stated in the resolution they'd be for long-term rentals only, they wasn't selling them. So that's what's on the table. This here is just another chop up of laws in our city. That's, that's precisely sitting on the table right now, the number two, and that's one, the one we passed, the number two, not this, not that they're going to do this, they said they didn't want to do short-term rental, they want long-term rentals. They made that statement in the resolution. So I'm just trying to do what we're supposed to be doing right for the city and the council. We can't be just fluctuating these laws right and left for anybody's need, then we don't need laws, we don't need orders, we don't need anything. That is not what was proposed, that was not what passed. I know you said they come back to change, that's their speculation that they can follow. That's up to them.
This is a.
Looks like what Paul said about the guy bought a piece of property, that's their fault, we're not in the real estate business.
It's driven by the market, and this is not the first time.
There's no, there's no proof of that, we hadn't seen that, nowhere.
This is not the first time that we've had a developer.
We got to pay attention, they said the market, they said they speculated.
Because of interest rate changes or something like that, where they've come back in and said, listen, we've rethought that project, and now we, we want to do something different on here, you know, because under market changes or whatever, that particular project's not going to work, but.
Well, I'm asking my councilpeople to vote down, the number four that's on the table, we already have one passed. This is the one that's just totally changed what they started with.
Director, I missed it earlier when you, I think, Councilman Guines asked, how many planning commissioners dissented for the?
No, it was 12-0.
Oh, 12-0, okay. Thank you.
Why were 12-0? I read the change script, because Jerry said there was no change, but he was saying there was no change to the three. This is a total change, and y'all, you know, ask some serious questions about this change, and who can permit to do what they're doing?
Yeah, and let me clarify that, because I don't want that to mislead anybody. What happened is, is that this went through and got through the planning commission as a PDC. With a PDC, you have to have five acres, and I missed it, I just missed it when it came through. And before it got to y'all, I called it and said, whoa, wait a minute, we can't do this, they don't have five acres. The only way they can do this is a PDI. And so when it went back to the planning commission, I said, this is the same project that was coming through as a PDC, it's coming through as a PDI, they made no changes to the site plan, it's exactly the same as what it was before, the only difference is the change to the title of what they're doing. So that, that clarifies what I meant by that.
Yeah, but I mean, it was never stated at the planning commission from you that it was on the table, is a change.
Mr. Tisdale?
I know we have a number of different developments out there, I know there's one in Ward Six, I think, is that DL, is DL Horton doing this project?
No.
No, Elliot.
Elliot's doing it.
And Elliot has a small subdivision or development out there by the old business incubator on Pops Ferry Road.
Yes, sir.
So I'm thinking, are there other projects? In my ward, they have the Petty, Petty Boy development out there.
Elliot has Point Breeze, you know, which are.
Right, those.
Archer houses.
Those are homes, but those were never designed to be town, townhomes. But Petty Boy, the development that's out there now, those are townhomes if I remember correctly.
Are you talking about the ones behind the new convenience store? Petty Boy. Oh, 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 no, 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 that's Joey Spears that's doing that project, yeah, those are, those are townhomes.
So just for the sake of argument, as if we needed more argument on the topic, but just for the sake of argument, if, if that developer comes in three weeks from now and asks for the same thing, we'd be sitting here having the same discussion, correct?
No, the difference is, is that he is not building it to the commercial standards that the fire chief and I have talked about. In other words, if he's going to come in and build townhomes, and he wants to use them for short-term rental, he's going to have to build them as short-term rental, meet the same standards as a hotel. And if they don't do that, then we're just not going to accept it.
Right, but the Petty Boy subdivision, that's not short-term rentals, those are just townhomes, correct?
No, but I thought that's where the conversation was going, is that we're going to have the same conversation about short-term rental, but.
No, and I'm talking in terms of a developer coming in and saying, the market's changed, now what I want to do is something different than what I proposed.
And he would go back through the process, he'd start all over again and come back through planning commission and city council.
Okay. But in the meantime, whatever construction is going on there now, for example, you've got, who has to go out and inspect those sites?
All of us do.
So then. So then, does anything change in terms of those inspections when you go out with the development change?
Only, only if they're wanting to do short-term rental in it, but we, we hold everybody to the residential code or the building code. The residential code is for one and two family dwellings and the, the building code is for all commercial development. That would fall into commercial development. And I had a conversation with Joey Spears last week. He's mentioned nothing about any changes.
And I, I don't, no, I was, that's just one I'm familiar with. Okay, thank you, Jerry, appreciate it.
Okay, all in favor? All against? Fails a lack of.
Who were the three in opposition for Gary?
Who's the three in opposition? Tisdale, Shoemaker and Lawrence.
Shoemaker and Tisdale.
And Lawrence.
And George, okay, thank you.
All right, Resolution F.
Resolution to grant final subdivision plat approval for, for the preserve at Parker Creek subdivision, phase one for a parcel fronting Shriners Boulevard.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Shoemaker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion, Mr. Shoemaker?
It's final approval, final plat approval. I believe this was, the rest of it was approved back in '21. And I think they're, if I'm not mistaken, just getting ready now for the, to hopefully start building.
That's it. Infrastructure, gate is in on Jim Burden Road. So this is just the first.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Nothing to add.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote brings us to Resolution F. G.
Resolution granting a vacation of an unimproved public right-of-way for properties located in the 200 block of Lee Street.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Guines?
Nope, it's just to vacate some property and allow the residents to go ahead and keep that area cleaned up.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I have nothing to add.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote brings us to Resolution H.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plat approval for 7129 Larkin Place East.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make it.
Motion by Mr. Shoemaker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion, Mr. Shoemaker?
No, he, all he's doing is, is separating a piece of property he owns, it's a larger piece of property, I think almost an acre and a half into, to two parcels.
Mr. Glavine? No? Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Brings us to Resolution I.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a short-term rental located at 12105 Cedar Lake Road.
But, yeah, looking, the first one fails, so you can't vote on this one.
No, this didn't fail.
The first one was approved.
Like anybody, there's nothing to vote on.
The first one didn't fail, though.
No, this.
You can't make a short-term rental?
No, no, it passed.
It passed.
It's 3-3?
No, it was 4-2.
The first one was.
It was 4-2. So it passed.
I will make the motion, though.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second, all right. Motion by Mr. Shoemaker, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Shoemaker?
I, I think we beat that to death earlier, no more discussion.
All right, Mr. Guines?
Horse is already dead.
Anyone else? All in favor? All against? 4-2 again. Move it on to Resolution J.
Resolution appointing George Burke Road to the Biloxi Housing Authority Board.
Joe, I'll second, I'll second Mr. Lawrence's.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence and then Mr. Tisdale.
Anybody wants to be on the housing authority, that's amazing to me. Anybody wants to do, I think, he's a good man, but I tell you, wow, what a waste. But I mean, I'm, he wants to do it, fine, I'll vote for it.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I think some of us up here know George, he's, he's a good man, he's an honest man, so I encourage your support, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, all in favor? Unanimous vote brings us to the consent agenda.
Some moved.
Second.
All right, anything to discuss, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, and Mike, on B, C and D, is there any change in the rate? That's the different boat berth rate. Are they the same we have before or are you just extending the time?
The rate, rate in the new.
Say again?
The rate in the new floating docks, dollar a foot higher. Is that what you're asking?
No, I said, is it the exact same rates or did you change the rates?
Rate, in the new floating docks is $1 per foot higher.
Yeah, but I mean, that's what's, what's on the table. I mean, so there's nothing, you're just going by just a dollar added to the burden. Okay. So this, this is all a new section. So we got that approved where they could fill that up now?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's three different slips there.
And then, I just want to get this straight, this L, like in Lawrence? The legal expenses connected with the capital project, what kind of legal expenses we had? Did we sue us or something, what happened?
Yeah, right-of-way issues that may CSX stuff, but you know, the, I think that. Buy a lot of property.
Say again?
Legal, legal activity and all of those.
Okay, but I mean, I've never seen that on there before, we've been doing it for the last 10 years. And now we've got legal, so I'm just asking, why is that listed? Would somebody sue us or are we just doing the regular legal thing?
Yeah, just legal expenses, right. Related to delivering that product, of that project.
So we paying a lawyer to do something?
Yeah.
Just trying to figure it out. And on N, this money for the Pops Ferry Extension Construction?
Right.
So where, how much money are we talking about that we spent in front of the bond?
Well, there's a, a whole complex of, of sources, you know, from the county to MDOT, to grants, to the bond. So that makes up, you know, the, the items that were described and bid, I think the total product was 20.89 mil, or 20.899 million. And we're moving forward with that. Our next step after this resolution goes to MDOT for final approval and then we break ground after contract negotiations.
I know we got a ton of money, Todd, I've been just saying, I hope we go somewhere with it, Bobo. I've been listening to this since.
Well, we've been doing this for four years.
I know, I keep voting for this stuff to hope something does. Then we bind up the highway, add the road.
If you don't approve it, well, nothing will get done. We need this approved, the next step.
I had no problem with that, I mean, I, have we looked, we went up to anybody to get a $250 million so we could build a bridge too? Or we have to have this done first?
That's the next step, yeah, that's the next step.
The one we got on the table is just another step for the, the Q.
Yeah.
It's just another step for us to.
Move forward with.
Move forward with that project, okay. That might be it. That's it.
All right, Mr. Guines?
I have none.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, on item A, this deals with the equipment lease purchase. I just had a question. And it was determined that the vehicle purchase did not qualify under the treasury regulations. Is that, I mean, did we find this out after we had approved or taken action on this last matter? Hi, Janie. Good to see you again.
Nice to be here. Yes, when the administration called me about doing these as a lease finance, some of the vehicles had already been purchased.
Right.
And there's a 60-day rule that you can only go back 60 days.
Okay.
And some of them were beyond that. So these, this is a taxable deal we're doing now for the older purchases.
Okay, thank you very much, Jane. Now wait, listen to my question. The total cost was 29 grand for this capital project. Is that accurate? This was on the capital project, Pops Ferry Recreation Lights closing this project, the total cost was 29.6, is that accurate? So usually capital, man, I'm just, this is, it's education time for me now.
We never, we never signed any contracts. We didn't get far enough along.
Okay, is there any threshold for capital projects for it to be declared a capital project or? Okay, that's good. Thank you. All right, and then on item, scratch it, I had a question about item I. Zach, I don't know if you're, I, I'll talk with you after the meeting about it. Just, and then item, item N. So we approved general obligation bonds of 5 million, that's Series 2024. And at the time, some of this was going to go to purchase the warehouse on Division Street at 321 Division Street. And the rest of the time, some of that was going to go towards Fire Station Number Five.
Right.
And what you're asking now is, is to take that 1 million, you want to move 1 point, almost 1.7 million to the Pops, is it the Pops Ferry Extension? Yeah, to the Pops Ferry Extension product, project. Because apparently you feel like you need more funding for the Pops Ferry Extension. And here's, here's, so here's, and looking at this and going through this, and you also know, while the resolution is stayed, the resolution may be de-allocated from Project 117. So my concern is, why are we moving this 1.7 million?
We're not moving anything, we're actually allocating as a budgetary, should we choose to de-allocate or de-scope some of that project, which may not be funded sufficiently for the features that were done for the Colosseum.
All right, doesn't say anything in here about the Colosseum, though.
But literally, the, the features of the 20 million, I think that was the, the, the source of that, to make sure we were totally funded for the.
All right, so for the features of whatever the Colosseum requires.
Required by the Colosseum, I guess it would be better description.
Right, requires. But that's in, that's included in the, in Neekes Brothers bid?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so that bid comes in at 20 point, roughly 20.8 million. Okay.
3.82, which is, is, is those features asked by the Colosseum.
Okay, and you, you've got, based on the funding sources, you have 22.2 million.
Yeah.
Okay, so why do you need?
Contingency, there's contingencies in other, uh, construction costs. 10% contingency in the bid, Christie.
But.
And RPR, yeah, that's what the, the engineering services, RPR.
Isn't that included in the bid?
No, that's included in, in the, uh.
All right.
Construction to.
Thank you, I need that explanation. The next thing is, if it is de-allocated, then we're back to square one on Fire Station Five.
No.
Where are you going to pull the money from?
It won't be there, okay? And, and it'll be, you know, you got 5.5, 5 million there, so 1.5, 2 million. What was the bid we estimated in Fire Station? Yeah.
1.8?
So we got.
Where are you going to get the money for that?
Put partially there and some other places.
But I'm not having my question answered. Again, my concern is.
Okay, we got time.
I've been pushing to have Fire, Fire Station Five renovated for three or four years.
I have too. And, and again, that was part of the deal, that we would get 5 million.
That was the deal, we got the 5 million. Now we're using that money not for Fire Station Five, but for something else. If you need it.
If we need it, that's it.
Well, I've found that sometimes you do need it, which is great, but that doesn't do anything to renovate Fire Station Five.
We'll identify those sources when those bids are, are recognized.
This is like a roller coaster ride.
Oh, it's not a roller coaster, it's, it's part of the financial.
No, it's a roller coaster ride, only, it's like a Disney ride with the doors opening and closing. We turn a corner and great, and here, here's another issue. And I understand in these construction projects that sometimes you've got to have these contingencies. Okay, I get that and I, I appreciate you explaining that.
It's every time in RPR, primarily it's mostly RPR.
I appreciate that point. I just want to be sure that we get this station renovated.
Well, I'll stake my reputation as a journalist on that.
All right, well, you stake your reputation on, on a firm date. And don't say in the not-too-distant future, that's not good enough. That's, that's what I worry about. We keep, you know.
Yeah, okay.
We keep going through these things and we never, never come to a conclusion. All right, so on Churchill Avenue, we had, we opened a capital project there, we did a study. And now we're, there was more to that project than just a study. But now we're closing that project, so whatever the issue was, and I would assume since it's a ditch, it relates to drainage, that apparently we're not going forward on that.
Yeah, so we did the study, the study, the, the ditch works at capacity, it functions the way it's supposed to function. There are times it does overflow into the street, mainly that's when we have torrential downpour, downpours in a short time period, which is not uncommon. We have, we see that a lot in Ward Seven. So the, a result of the study was that in order to pipe that ditch, it was going to cost in excess of a million dollars. And I think without having that funding available right now, that the decision was made just to close the project for now, and if we had funding that was, came available, we could always revisit that issue.
Right, and just, just a couple of things, since we're on the topic. Number one, the, the drainage ditch there continues to get shallower and shallower because of the sediment and everything. Years ago, probably under Dan Geyer, because part of the roadway was deteriorating, and they put some sort of geo-netting there and I guess rock. And all of that's, the geo-netting's coming apart every time that the city mows that right-of-way. Some of that netting is caught up and chewed up. So something's going to have to be done. The longer we put it off, the more costly it's going to be. All right, thank you, Christie.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
I just want to comment on item G on the consent agenda. Earlier during my report, I mentioned Lamy Street and I didn't mention Dan Quavis's name, but I, I did want to recognize Dan for his assistance and certainly the Iowa City Council. But on this particular item, this is an interlocal agreement with the supervisors and this is former councilman and current supervisor, Nathan Barrett. And Nathan and I rode around Ward Six once he was elected, trying to identify different areas that had some high needs. And, and we identified this particular one that's on 605 Sunrise. The elders live at the end of the cul-de-sac. They've been struggling with drainage and flooding issues and we believe that this interlocal agreement, that the county has agreed to pick up the majority of the bill, will alleviate some of that flooding and increase their quality of life in that area. So I, I wanted to kind of shout out to Supervisor Barrett for his assistance. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Shoemaker?
I don't have anything.
All right. All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous vote? Do we have any exceptions?
None.
No? All right.
Item N.
Item N for Mr. Tisdale.
Yes, thank you.
Is that it? Moving on to code enforcement.
Item A on the agenda, Kenneth Cook Estate, 13132 Hustley Road. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Kenneth Cook State at 13132 Hustley Road? If not, this case is closed.
Item B, Randolph and Joedna Fagan, 1667 Pringle Street. That case, circle, that case has been resolved. Item C, Monolith Debt Strategies LLC, Zero Division Street. That case has been resolved. Item D, Monolith Debt Strategies LLC, 674 Division Street. This property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Monolith Debt Strategies at 674 Division Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Monolith Debt Strategies at 674 Division Street?
Jerry, is that the same people, both of them?
It is. This is the property right next to Dr. Mason's office. They did cut the grass, but they did not cut the overgrowth there that you can see, so it's not completed.
They just didn't finish it.
That's correct.
Yeah. Is it possible to get in contact with them and just tell them to cut it?
We, we can try. I mean, we've sent notices. Obviously, they're getting the notices since they cut the grass.
Yeah.
But if you want to give them some time, we'll try.
Yeah, let's just do a quick 30. I'll move for 30.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Guines for 30 days, second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Unanimous votes?
Item E, John William Nixon Jr., 321 Benaki Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item F, Francisco F. Sardi, 331 Big Lake Road. That case has been resolved. Item G, State of Mississippi, 334 Crusus Street. That property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the State of Mississippi?
Heck, no.
Don't let George do it.
If not, this case is closed.
Item H, William Brandon and Maria Thompson, 354 Keller Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item I, Ken H. Tran, 378 Bowen Street. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Ken H. Tran at 378 Bowen Street? If not, this case is closed.
Item J, Thomas and Donna Van Exwick, Elswick, 2033 Southern Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item K, Akron Cleveland Construction Group, 444 Allen Street. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Akron Cleveland Construction Group at 444 Allen Street? If not, this case is closed.
Item L, Nicholas Keef Rodoffich, 180 Claiborne Street. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Nicholas Keef Roldo...
Rudolph Fitch.
Roldo Fitch at 180 Clarabone Street? If not, this case is closed. Okay, we'll go on to the routine agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Walt, there he is back there. I know you come in late, but give us some good news today. Bring some checks in that book you got.
Absolutely, Council. Thank you. Good afternoon. Last Tuesday on July 9th, the city received 421.3 thousand in reimbursements from MEMA, and we will be asking them for a little more than 1.5 million here shortly, as our next advance on our funds or reimbursements.
So we stand on top of it?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's what we need to hear. Thank you.
Sure.
All in favor? Unanimous votes? Meeting to, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Unanimous votes? Meeting is adjourned. We'll take a five-minute break to go on to a special meeting. I guess. Welcome to the special meeting called by the mayor for July 16th. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Unanimous votes? Moving us to the presentation agenda. Mayor's report?
No report.
Council reports, Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Mr. Tisdale?
None.
Mr. Glavine?
None.
Public agenda, citizen comments. Do we have anyone on my left that would like to speak? Anyone on my right? Anyone in the room? If not, citizen comments are now closed. Moves us to the policy agenda. Ms. Carey?
Subject matter of the meeting is to discuss the fiscal year 2425 budget.
All right. Take it away, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Bottom line, it's just about the same, okay? Revenues with regard to what we're projecting in '25. We had some adjustments in a little bit of growth in Abalorum, real property tax, Diana. We're right on the money. You know, again, we, in '24, we budgeted a record dollar amount of revenue. We're almost there. Maybe forecast a little bit short, but right on the money as far as the 23 million in, in tax based on GGR. Device, I guess, revenue is falling down a little bit, and that's been the trend over the last number of years. But, you know, when you look at the bottom, everyone has the report, the schedule that Diana has prepared, and you look at the original 24 budget, revised 24 budget, and where we are year-to-date. You know, we kicked up the revenue estimate from about 74,4, 442,000 to 73, about 167,000. But right now, where we are, we're right at 57 million through period nine. Is that it?
Yeah.
Period nine, yeah, yeah. So a little bit ahead of schedule there as far as collected. But the bottom line for '25, 75 million, 244. And that's where we have to work the rest, the remainder of the budget, and from the general fund standpoint. And that's, I'm available to answer any questions if you have them at this point in time, but it's almost reflective of what we had last year.
Do we have any?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
It ought to be easy. The, the license tag reader, or, you know, that revenue, where is that in here? What item? Is it the diversion, or is it?
It's line 13.
Line 13, okay.
Diane, 600 something?
Yep, I see it. Thank you.
Got a few more questions. Diana, I checked with the mayor, he didn't know, you may not know. When does the next reassessment of property occur in the state, do you?
I believe it's next year.
Next year. So, I mean, it won't affect us in fiscal year '25, but it will impact us in fiscal year '26. And I would think that would help us with that reassessment, wouldn't you think?
If it goes our way.
Yeah, if it goes our way, well, yes, sir, ma'am.
Let me also talk with the assessor's office about new homes and some of these things that are going on. You know, we have several opportunities, several subdivisions that's going to add 200 to 400 home, room, homes, as well as some of the commercial. In the past, there's been some, some questions about the value of a hotel room, or the value, when you, when you sell something for $300,000, where does that hit the tax roll for? We're expecting an adjustment, not due to assessment, reassessment, but actually 85% of the valuation of what the, you know, should hit the Abalorum tax roll, market value. And 85% of the number could eventually grow into a larger, you know, Abalorum tax revenue picture. So that's on the radar with, with the assessments, with the assessor's office. So we just had a, the Assessor and Tax Collector Convention, 95th Convention, we welcome Monday morning. So there's some other things that would add to that as well. I think we've just about rolled all those incentives that we've had over the last several years off, right, Diana? Maybe just a few left, but we, five-year, 50, but again, some of the growth will come, you know, a lot of times, something's unexpected with regard to new businesses popping up. But again, maybe take two years to roll into it. So I mean, a five-year plan, the growth is, I'm expecting more than 5% growth per year as far as dollars.
Diana, do you have an idea of what a mill will generate?
754,000.
Okay.
Would you say 764?
54.
54.
54.
And I read, read something, I read something about new exempt and non-exempt status guidelines from the Department of Labor. Is that going to impact us in terms of overtime? Who's eligible for overtime and who's not, okay?
Yes, it does.
And you're a sharp cookie, and by the way, you do a good job on the revenue end of that. I appreciate that. I just wanted to check and be sure on that. Who would? Which, which department would look at if we were going to take a look at exempt and non-exempt with these new regs? Who sits down and looks at that and says?
HR.
HR, okay. Well, I hope they're, I hope they're doing that. Stay in touch with them. Thank you.
Well, part of it's already in effect. It went in effect July 1.
Right, and there's another part that kicks in January 1.
January 1.
Okay. Also, when we do our audit, are we in the last year of an audit contract right now with?
No, '23 was year three. '24 will be year four.
Okay, so this, okay, this is our last year, right? We'll be advertising for a new auditor then?
You don't even have to advertise for it. We can just request proposals.
All right, and the only reason I ask is I would request that, that in past audits for a number of years, they always included the number of employees, usually by department?
They didn't include it. We included it because we did a comprehensive annual report. But now we just do a financial report.
Okay.
So the entire statistical section is missing.
Okay.
We only do required supplementary information now.
Okay, whatever's required legally is all we provide.
Correct.
Okay. I don't know, there, there may be other questions. If, anybody else have any questions? If not, George, it looks like George is going to speak.
Would you say about the full-time employees that we have? How many we have full-time employees?
I didn't think we were talking about that today.
We didn't talk about that, but it's about 604, I think.
I don't know.
And I can go, on your?
For fiscal year, we had budgeted 645 for the general fund, and 35 for water sewer, and 28 for port.
So you have 645 full-time employees?
Right, that's full and part.
That includes about 30 part-time people, too.
I don't know.
And, and, and I...
I was just looking, I was looking for full-time people, so we have less than 645.
Correct.
So, so you said 30 something is just full-time people, whatever you want to call them? And that, I was just looking for our employees that are full-time with the city blocks, the number. For two reasons. The final number we have, and plus, let's see how many's on the insurance. Because that's a big play for us to find out, the insurance, you know, the health insurance.
Right.
So I need to find out the information out. And on the gaming, I know everything has been just record after record after record, but nothing seemed to be changing that much in the money we collect.
No.
Not, not big amount. I'll tell you before, you need to explain to these people, they see that billion dollars. We don't get a billion dollars. It's 8, it's 12%, no, I...
Who am I going to be explaining it to? I mean, literally, this is the revenue part of the year.
Not to me.
Yeah.
About the people don't realize, you only 8% tax money out of the 12 goes to the state.
4%, 4% and then about it, yeah, I understand. But who are we talking to right now? We're talking about what?
We're talking about revenue. We're trying to see what we can do about the revenue.
Let me explain it to them right now. If it's on TV, I can. You know, the billion dollars is translated to 120 million dollars in gross gaming revenue. The first 80 million that goes to the State of Mississippi. The rest of it goes to, to the city in the form of 23 million as a 0.32 percentage of the thing that's shared between public safety, City of Biloxi Fund, as well as the City of Biloxi Schools, and shared an equal amount of money, which 120 million dollars translates into 3.76 million to City of Biloxi Schools, and another 3.76 million is translated to Harrison County, Gulfport, Long Beach, and Pesci Shand. That's it.
Okay, so what do we actually put in the pocket?
23 million. Listed on it, 23 million.
Yeah, but I'm talking that we keep 23 million for the whole year.
That's what's budgeted. If we collect a billion dollars in gross gaming revenue in our eight casinos.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, I see all that, I'll tell you. I'm just trying to find, hey, we're trying to find more money. So evidently, we're not going to, no matter with the gaming, we don't get a few percent anyway. We don't get enough. And you can't, you, this don't fluctuate definitely prices, sale taxes, the Abalorum tax, none of that changes that much.
No, 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 no. Let me, let me correct that, okay? About four years ago, we, we were lucky that we would break 1 million in a month, right, Jerry? Listen to me. I think it's, for 28 months, we've exceeded 1.2 million. Okay, but prior to that, we were, we were a number of months at about 900,000. It's the sales tax diversion collections, what I'm talking about.
38.
38 months, so... So, and it's, and at some point, it's over 1.4 million a month, okay? So it has grown. We're at about $15 million, was it 14.8 million?
Right.
Okay. So it has grown over the last four years by $2 million annually. So there's growth in it. We've been budgeting record gaming revenue as well as sales tax revenue. So, you know, not a number of years ago, probably 2019, we can look that up. But I think sales tax total for the year was about 11.8 million. So we have grown. We've grown. Not a huge jump, but it's a jump. It's a steady jump because we 30, as Jerry said, it's 38 months in a row. Forty months in a row. So we're fortunate and we, you know, we want to grow that too. Every opportunity that we do to put new business online into, because we need that to support another 50,000 people on that weekend. That's why it's important that we take every advantage of all, every revenue stream we can possibly do. So that's, you know, when you do the arithmetic, every dollar that's collected in a coffee shop, right? It goes, you send it to the state of Mississippi, we get 18.5 cents back. Do the arithmetic. That means we sent $180, $108 million up there and we get $14 million back. So we're just trying to plug along and get our share. For those who, you know, are interested in that.
Mayor, on that ad valorem discussion, on getting to the ad valorem discussion, you have $67,000 is the figure, I think I'm reading here, in growth year over year?
Right, right.
Is that due to new builds and new valuations?
Such value, grown.
Okay, how about the, you know, the tax abatements? Are there any tax abatements that will roll off that is not included in this calculation?
Two of them left. That will be, when they roll off next year, you know, that'll be full value. Probably 50% of that assessed valuation from those properties will go back on.
Will that happen in this next budget year?
Next year, yeah.
Okay.
No, it won't happen this year.
It'd be the following year.
But there'll be new businesses going online. Everything that's, has finished construction this year, okay, will hit the tax roll in July, goes to the state of Mississippi. So that will be, and then it will be paying that value. You know, most of the things that will take a year to roll onto it. Just new business opening up.
I'm with you, okay. Thank you.
Do we have, I know we had Hard Rock, all these people that we used to have that 100% money, that's all done. So we're doing, now you're just on the 50%.
50, yeah, that's been done. We haven't done anything more than 50% for five years in a while.
So how many of those do we actually have?
Left, two, I think. Two of them left.
Two of them right now, that's all that's left. So they're really?
Almost done. Yeah. The growth in abhorum, the assessed value, which is 10% for, you know, if you got a $100,000 house, your assessed valuation, and you're a resident, that assessed valuation is 10% of the true value, they call it. That'd be $10,000 that you apply to 109 mills. 30 for us, 30.1 for us, 43 for the county, for the Biloxi Public Schools, and 36.1 for the county. That growth, $10,000 if you're resident, residential, or 15,000 instead of if it's a short-term rental or rental house, that, you know, that increases, you know, what you apply the millage to. 15,000 versus 10,000.
I was going to ask you a question about the short-term rental. How do we still realize that we're getting our money back from the AB and V that actually collect all the stuff on the private ID numbers? Tax numbers? But we never could tell, we were supposed to have 460 something.
That's a question we've asked over and over again with, from the state tax commission. I think, actually, we have a better chance this coming year. I think our representative Kevin Felscher is part of that subcommittee that will, you know, have a channel to say, this is what we need. This is what we need to reconcile, at least, you know, from who's doing what, when. And I think that'd give us a little bit better position. Tax commission covets, you know, that information pretty, you know, even though it's automated and it can drop out of the system. And Diane, there's some things that you can review right there online, can't you? That, but you have to do a lot of calculation after that.
Right, that's the problem, they, the tax commission collects that money accordingly. So we should be getting checks accordingly. The problem is, we don't know where the money is coming from.
But we can't reconcile it. We get a check.
Right.
Councilman, there's a significant software program that Coastal Mississippi has that is actually working with the tax commission. And it identifies these short-term rental businesses. It's various sophisticated software. Mayor, I don't know if you've spoken with them.
No, but I know what you're talking about, yeah.
They're paying for that. It's a pretty expensive program because they have a vested interest in getting those taxes collected as well. And I'm sure they would share that with us and they can drill down by municipality as well.
What we need, from an accounting standpoint, is making sure we get reconciled with the check that they send us every month to the business opportunities that we're expecting. And, you know, if that helps, that helps a little portion of it. But that's not all of the things. That's just the short-term. We need the whole ballgame.
Sure, sure. But I would have your accounting department, you know.
My accounting department?
I know, I know. I would have her contact Judy Young. And it'd be worth an hour, spend an hour in looking at that software that they have. It's pretty sophisticated.
And how long have they been available? Can we, how come we're not involved in that?
They just contracted with it about, I'm going to say, six months ago. I sit on that commission with Rusty David and others. And the main reason they invested in it is because we want to get our fair share for Coastal Mississippi on those tourism taxes that are essential for matching funds and everything. And, but it will drill down, it will drill down to the municipality. And it, the tax, it's caught the tax commission's interest. And they're going to plug in with us and use some of that data in their enforcement.
So my problem with the AB and V is they collect the money. They said, when do we ever get it back?
Well, I think that's.
That's the thing, I said, they collect it, like some, somebody rents a room, whatever, the house, they collect the money. And then we never know when we get it or we even get it back.
Well, that's the problem. I think Kenny's saying, in this situation, you know that those entities that fall within our corporate city limits, and there's a way to determine that that indeed has been paid. But I have no, they sent us a check, we have no idea how it's like, you know, the debits and credits to your hit. That's what we need to reconcile. Like you do, like we do our normal checkbook.
I mean, I think Jerry said we had 460 something. It looked like to me we kind of boost our sales tax a little bit if we're getting all the money we're supposed to be getting. That's my problem. We don't seem to be changing, fluctuating that much with the sales tax income. When you've got 460 new businesses, collecting some, somewhere to collect.
Well, you need to room nights and you, you know, the arithmetic, if they are collecting at 5%, how is that getting back to us? How's it, the 7% on that 5%? I think the 5%, you know, they're interested, but we're interested in the 7%, which is the 185 of the diversion.
The 5% have broken up two or three different ways too, the 5% money, right? But we're talking.
Two ways, 275 and 225.
Yeah, I'm talking about the 7% that we, that's sales taxes, that's the commercial business. We should get all of that.
Yeah.
The 7%. And I mean, that's what I'm saying, the sales taxes, you never know, they don't seem to change that much. And you're supposed to have 460 new businesses. I know they have rooms and I, you know, Felix is a tourist zone, but we're not getting money for that. And that costs us money to do stuff like that. So that was just another problem. To me, that's something we really need to look at. If they got a program and we can use their program, that's fine. Because I'd love to know if they actually, like the AB and V collected all this money.
Some of the things I would like to know, how many room nights did you collect? And what was, what was the base of it? I don't need to, you know, share the data, just give me a report that these are the businesses that have been collected and these are reconciled to the 400 units that are on the, on the books. Give us a report and we, you know, our spreadsheet and our crack accounting department will handle it.
And on the, how do we do it at the court? That we, with the new cameras in the sky, is that?
Yeah, that's what we talked about, 600,000 is what we're estimating.
Is that on here?
600,000, yeah. On line 13, Diane?
Where's that on?
Line 13. And some of that has been reflected this year also.
The court? So you, what were we collecting right here, 13?
Yeah, 600,000. 600,000.
All right, yeah. The 593?
Line 13, all the way to the right.
Both of them say 550. I was trying to find the 600,000. I don't see that on there.
Diversion fees, line 413.
We didn't go for a, right here.
That's projected revenue.
600,000.
That was projected, yeah. And that's just because we started at, we started at the beginning of the year. We hadn't done a full year yet.
So we actually collected 109 so far? Is that what 109 is? And you expect to gain 500,000 by the end of the year?
Yeah, we've only hit it in play in a couple of months.
With the full year.
Full year.
Because we didn't do it the full year.
May, chief, May? It took a while to crank up.
Yeah, because I'll tell you, I'm trying to lose a million dollars on that thing. Or not collecting a million, like you said. I don't care how you call it. I mean, we don't, nothing in the city of Biloxi, we all be losing that kind of money.
Well, there's a lot of factors in that. We're not losing money, we're just.
There's a lot of expenses for that thing.
Okay.
I have something that I just want to kind of throw out there. And I know we didn't, we didn't give raises over the past year. And I'm not looking at the directors, but mainly our main workers. If we can look at the possibility of projection of maybe a 3% raise, what it would look like with our projected budget?
Right, I think.
Is there something that we could look at just to see?
We're in that process right now. And we're looking at a number of ways from the bottom and the top and staying where we need to be. And against, you know, what we have to offset. Revenues are going to be the same, you know, in business, it goes to bottom line. Either you increase your revenues or decrease your expenses in order to manage, you know, the situation. And that's what we're in the process now. And our next job will be addressing those things that aren't everyone's money.
And not that we're going to adopt it just to get a look at it, just to see what it looks like.
Place opportunities. Where can we cut the budget in order to maintain these revenues? Because that's where the dollars are coming from. Now, again, we, you know, we're expecting, she's, Diane is projecting some cash balances that may be reflective of, you know, making or, you know, gaining ground, which would put us some additional fund balance this year. That may offset some things that we could do when it comes to increases and so forth. That she don't like to go into fund balance, but that's what you make money for in order to use it. But we have to take care of business. And employees are our business. And that's what you're saying.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
I have a question, Puffo. You have three homeland securities down there. Why there's three different ones?
They're grants.
The bomb squad, one, two bomb squads and I don't know what the.
Different grants, different grants. Different grants in years? Yeah, I'm trying.
And that's all we got from them, that, okay. And on a B news, what used to be 140,000, now you got listed at 96,000, 112,000. It dropped that much?
Well.
What did they do?
I think, I'm not sure exactly how to reconcile that. But, you know, I think the number of pages, I have some, you know, a lot to do with, you know, how much you can advertise.
No, I think, I think the people like that.
Yeah.
That's a pretty good update.
Well, it's costly, I mean, it's a, it's a great, you know, feature and.
How much advertising we get over that?
Well, I'd have to, 96.
96,000 in advertising?
Yeah.
And that thing's pretty good, it goes every home.
It does.
You know, that thing will be packed with advertisement, you know? Do we actually do it like that? That we promote it that way?
Yeah.
I mean, we have somebody that goes out for advertising?
Yeah, public relations.
They, nothing reaches a home like that.
Yeah.
In the city of Biloxi, nothing.
It has a cost, but it has a value too. Not totally dollars, but it has a tremendous value.
Yeah. And on the, I don't know if that's on the harbors? I don't know if it's half-empty? Or are we collecting enough money like the boats?
Yeah, I think so.
Something like that. I know they got something on there about that tomorrow, next week. I don't know what that's supposed to be.
Yeah, for transient boat fees and I think the whole, you know, rate structure is, has solidified. If that's the question you're asking, yeah.
I think what you're asking, those two first readings, that is the 10% discount if they pay a year in advance. They used to get if they paid three months in advance, they got a discount. And we didn't, we felt it was a little bit better if they pay their year in advance, we'd give them the 10%.
A 10% discount on a year?
If you pay yearly.
They pay money upfront.
That's right.
Councilman, let me, let me make something clear. If our collection of fees for the harbor don't come anywhere near covering our costs, we would, we would be in trouble if we also didn't have the county millage that we use for projects.
Well, that's the county money.
And also the rent that we have.
And the rent that we get from.
That's the community, that's the county. Roughly. Because that mill is worth about $2 million, correct, to county? And that's what they're probably paying us a mill a year. Harbors.
But the amount of money we collect from our leaseors in that harbor comes nowhere near covering our costs of running a port.
Well, you got three, some employee, we never had that many in the harbors anyway.
We still got the cheapest rates on the coast.
You know, you got, we're supposed to be providing some services. You can't charge everybody a brother every time we do something. You know, we don't spend our money wisely, that's our fault. The citizens put up the tax money and we're supposed to make sure we handle it the correct way and spend it wisely. That's all I'm saying.
Go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
Jumping in there, okay. So we want to have our next workshop after next Tuesday's council meeting?
You want to, we'll be covering something, yeah.
Yeah.
We said that already.
We got to keep rolling. We got to keep rolling. So are there topics you'd like to see on that agenda?
Well, you know, again, the expenses and the propositions that we will, you know, we'll face with the budget we're going to prepare.
Right. Well, I know you and I talked about employee compensation. Can we discuss that? And if there's any reason we can't? So we'll, we'll talk about employee compensation. Did you want to get into some of the other departmental budgets or some of the other?
Well, I think we've covered the departmental budgets all in one fell swoop, I think, but not the individual to review them. And I think what we propose is that the $25,000.
But we like asking those directors questions.
You ain't going to have enough time unless you go to make a daytime meeting into a nighttime meeting.
We've done that before.
Well, anyway, we'll have at the highest level, department level, what we think we do, need to do with regard to what Felix had to ask about compensation and, you know, where we would be reducing the expense when it comes to balancing the revenues against expenses.
All right, so.
So 12, you'll have 12 pieces of paper that will say, okay, this is what, an impact of whatever X percent would be. And we, you know, inclusive of some of the things, I think Diane mentioned that, you know, the PERS figure was 17.4%. Now it went up to 17.8 July 1 of this year. So that's going to be, will into, you know, the figures of your fund balance this year, so to speak. But then in July of next year, it goes up to 18.4.
Right.
So that growth is already in, in some of the numbers we're working.
Carey, did you get enough for an agenda with that, with God's employee compensation? And with other, other budget related matters?